Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Henderson.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry for the delay this evening. The Board did meet in executive session with the Knox County Law Department. Mr. Duport, would you like to do your speech on that?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the Board had a quarterly executive session, which is a time for the Board to meet with the Law Department, our office, and discuss pending litigation and anticipated litigation. That was done. That is an exception to the Open Meetings Act under Smith v. Anderson County. And I can state that the Board was not to deliberate and did not deliberate. That was just a time for the Law Department to present and then answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duport. Board members, we do have a quarterly work session later this month. It will be on Wednesday, October 26, at 5:00 p.m. in this boardroom. And also, our November work session and regular session meetings are scheduled for November 7th and November 9th at 5:00 p.m. in the same boardroom. And before we approve our agenda for this evening, I wanted to request a small change to the order of our discussion on the October 5th agenda items. Jim Snowden, Senior Director of Knox County Engineering and Public Works, was kind enough to join us this evening for a discussion on the new school zone and rezoning. And to be respectful of his time, I'm requesting that we move the zoning discussion to immediately follow the superintendent's report. So, are there any other suggested changes? So, motion to approve by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Watson. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent Ryswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Some brief updates since our last board meeting. First, I would like to begin by sharing an opportunity for feedback related to the government's ESSER program, which was created in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. As you may know by now, Knox County received $114 million in ESSER 3.0 funding last year, and we met with stakeholders and completed an in-depth needs assessment to help identify those spending priorities. We want to make sure that the community is fully informed and that this funding continues to be used strategically and effectively. District leaders will continue to provide updates to the Board of Ed, and you'll hear one in a little bit from Ms. Kelly and Ms. Himmelgarn. But we're also seeking feedback from the community, so I'm going to read this to get it right. If you'd like to provide input, please visit our website at knoxschools.org/esser, which is E-S-S-E-R. So, we're gathering that input now. That is meant to be an ongoing process, year in and year out, so there's a place there to respond. I also would like to give a shout-out to Brett Foster, who's the district's Executive Director of Food and Nutrition. Last month, Ms. Foster received the Knoxville-Knox County Food Policy Council's Individual Change Award in honor of her leadership and innovative spirit during the last three years. Ms. Foster and her nutrition team are definitely an asset to Knox County. And again, just really appreciate her love and her department's love of the students and how well she serves there. So, thank you, Brett, for what you do. And finally, I want to remind everyone that district schools will be closed next week, October 10th through the 14th for fall break. I hope that our students, staff, and family enjoy their week off and get a chance to rest and relax and prepare to finish the semester strong. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick. So, we will move into the zoning discussion now. Did you want to introduce that, Dr. Ryswick, as well?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I will, I'll begin with just kind of going over, I think, the Board received kind of a memo and some of that summary. I'm going to go back over some of the information from that, and then we'll have a time for questions. And as Ms. Christie said, Mr. Snowden's here from the county, as well as Dr. Adams and his team. So, I'll try to hit just kind of the high spots of the memo, just to give you all some information. So, first, really, you know, kind of, why did we build a new school? I think it's probably obvious, kind of, in the question of why we did, but really, the staff was kind of charged with two things. And first was to relieve the overcrowding of our current schools, and three of those schools included in this are Ball Camp Elementary, Karnes Elementary, and Harden Valley Elementary. We'll talk about where those numbers are in just a second. And then also, we know that's an area of our community that continues to expand and grow, and there's a lot of that land that's still to be developed. So, we want to make sure we're trying as best we can to provide space for that future growth. If you look at our current enrollments, this will give you an idea of what these schools were built to hold when you look at that capacity, that third column over. So, Ball Camp, 600, Karnes Elementary, 1,200, and Harden Valley Elementary, 1,200. And you see the enrollment there. You see Ball Camp and Karnes Elementary are right at their capacity currently, and Harden Valley is over 200 students. Right now, kind of, the rate of growth of Harden Valley is they're probably adding about 100 students a year, based on what we're looking at. And again, I think I was able to share, well, I guess I shared that at one of the input meetings on this meeting, but was able to go spend a morning with Lynn Jacobon, the principal at Harden Valley Elementary, and got to watch a drop-off from 7:00 till when all that happens. And there's no doubt, the school is very crowded. They're doing a great job there. Was able to visit some first-grade classrooms, where you had two teachers in the classroom teaching up to 40 kids. And that, again, allowable by the state, because you had no more than the assigned amount of kids per teacher. But again, you know, not ideal situation. I think the families there have been great with it, and the kids are performing really well, and they're making the best they can. They also have, at Harden Valley, it's 11 or 12, I want to make sure I'm right, kind of portables that are attached to the school, where mostly their second grade is. So, there's no doubt, again, that community continues to grow and be, I think, about the fastest-growing community that we have. In our proposal for what we looked at after gathering input, and again, I'll have folks from Dr. Adams' team be able to fill questions on this. When we looked at where we were in the capacity, and then the change that we're thinking the new school will relieve from each of these schools, so if you go over to that fourth column there on the change, we are proposing two things with this proposal in front of you today. One is to move the number of students. So, if you look at Ball Camp, 35 students from Harden Valley, 500 students, and Karnes Elementary, 200 students. And we're also, based on the input that we received through the listening, we had three of those that we did in each of the elementary schools, and then came back to Karnes Elementary with a proposal to the community of the zone. But it was brought up to us then, and this has been our practice when we were both at Gibbs Middle School and Harden Valley Middle, the two newest schools we've opened, that we grandfathered the students in that terminal grade. So, our current fourth graders, who will be rising fifth graders for next year, those are the counts for each of those schools. There are five students who would be rising fifth graders at Ball Camp that would be affected by this rezone, 71 at Harden Valley, and 24 at Karnes Elementary. So, we would plan in this proposal to give those students the opportunity to stay at that school for their fifth-grade year. If that does happen, you're looking at about 735 was what we would think. Again, the capacity of the new school would be 1,200, 735. If all 100 of those rising fifth graders chose to stay, you would see the enrollment of August of next year to be 635. Okay? So, again, if that's got 1,200, we made another column on the end there to see what that remaining capacity would be at each school, so that gives you some idea if our two goals were, one, to relieve overcrowding, and, two, to have some additional capacity moving forward, you see what we would look at in each of those schools for additional capacity. The Ball Camp area is one. You say that's not a lot of capacity, but it is a more established community at this time. The other community is still Harden Valley, being probably the one growing the most, and that would be the new elementary school, and Harden Valley Elementary is room to grow, and then Karnes falling in there. I'm not going to go over these maps, but just wanted to let you know, these are in your attachments, and I'm sure Mr. Dillingham and Dr. Adams will refer back to these in more detail when we get to these questions. So, I'll move through these, but these are the proposed zones, based on the numbers that we just said, and that one as well. And again, I'll have them discussing individual questions that may come from there. I did want to say this, too. Our next steps after the zone is adopted will be for Dr. Schafknocker, Sonny Schafknocker, to begin the next steps of kind of uniting this community back around this school. I want to say this on the front side, too. Zoning's hard. I mean, there's no hiding from that. Zoning is difficult. We understand families buy in certain zones, families choose to live in certain zones, and then we grow to a capacity where it's not possible to have school anymore. So, you know, we recognize and acknowledge that there's disruption in families, and maybe their plans that they had when those happened, but nonetheless, we're still where we are with the crowdedness. So, I'm just thankful that we have a leader like Dr. Schafknocker, who, one, has been the last principal at Harden Valley Elementary, knows the families. This year, she's been splitting her time between, she has an office at Karnes Elementary and at Harden Valley Elementary, so she can stay in touch with the families and also with the community at large. And I think this is neat. Back on September 29th, she led this with all the kids from all three schools that would be affected. They did, they took a steel beam from the school, and they actually had students from every and staff from every one of the three elementary schools do handprints on that, and that will go up in the new school. I think it was a great symbol to the community that, you know, this new school is going to be united, and it's going to be a great school. I mean, again, one, for her leadership, and then, two, we know the active involvement of the families and the community. We expect it to be a great school. So, just wanted to let you all know, next steps, once the zone is approved, a survey will be sent out by Dr. Schafknocker, and then these will be the next steps, to name the school, to come up with a mascot and colors for the school, and then start building out that PTA or PTSO, that parent organization that will be around it. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Adams and his team. And again, Jim, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Basically, any questions that you all may have, this is now the time to ask those questions. I certainly will include members of my team and Mr. Snowden as well. I know there were some questions about infrastructure, and we certainly want to get those questions answered as well.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. So, do we have any discussion or questions for Mr. Dillingham or Dr. Adams or Mr. Snowden? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When do we expect the roadwork to be completed?
That is definitely a Mr. Snowden question.
I appreciate you having me. Yeah, we've got several projects out there. The one that's right at the school proper, that pretty much runs from the new subdivision that's to the west of the school to east of the school's entrances, we're going to build that as a three-lane section. There'll be a three-lane section through the entire way that have plenty of queuing storage for turning vehicles. That project is, we bid it out. Charles Blaylock and Sons was the winner, the low bidder on that. County Commission will approve that contract at the end of this month, in October. It's in the amount for a little over $2 million. However, 1.3 million of that is actually roadwork, 700,000 is reimbursable utility, so the county will only be responsible for approximately 1.3 million of that. That project length is about a little short of a half-mile. We'll get started out there in October. There is some utility relocations that will have to occur, overhead power being the primary one of that. As soon as that's done, we'll start into grading and grubbing. Thankfully, we're not doing any curb and gutter, so the construction will be, it's not like a closed system drainage, so it'll be a lot quicker type of construction. So, we would anticipate construction of that half-mile that is from Cherahala, actually west of Cherahala, and all to the east of the school's entrances to be complete sometime in June or July of next calendar year. Now, the subsequent, the next phase that takes the project that actually goes further to the east, that ties in at the Ben Ashley Veterans Home, is, will be started next summer. However, it necessarily won't be completed by the time school is opened in August of next year, but it will be well underway. The primary reason of that is just really the coordination with CSX Railway. If anybody's ever dealt with the railroad, they know, they work on their timeframe and their timeframe only. But we're doing the best we can with that. We will have a new rail crossing that is to the south of the existing one with much better sightlines, as well as a brand-new bridge that allows for two-way traffic with shoulders and a sidewalk. And there will be, I was remiss in saying, there will be sidewalk along the entirety of the road on one side. So, if you're at the Veterans, pardon me, the Veterans Nursing Home, you'll be able to get on a sidewalk and walk all the way to the school as part of this project. So, the second phase should be complete probably the spring or summer of '24. So, we'll be a little bit behind, but all the improvements in front of the school proper will be done prior to school opening in August of next year. prior to school opening in August of next year.
Ms. Owen?
I mean, Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim, another question for you. So could you talk about some of the concerns I've heard from families in that area is the issue of crossing Pelisipi? And so I know it's, I've talked with or communicated with Dr. Adams about, until we know the zone, there's not really bus routes. But if Sawway Road is one of the, if it's utilized, is it possible to change the timing on the traffic light at that intersection at Sawway Road in Harden Valley, and then on around to Cherahala, so that traffic will not be as much of an issue?
It will. And Dr. Adams and I talked about that today. That's one of the things that we're going to do. We, when we first found out about the school in June of about 2020, we engaged a consultant to do a traffic study, much like we do for any single-family home. You know, there's the traffic that's there before, the background traffic and the generated traffic. And we look at that, and we add in the background growth. So we knew that there was the potential for a lot of traffic, both single-family, west on Harden Valley, as well as, you know, growth in the industrial park there on Cherahala. So we assumed a lot of worst-case scenarios there. And one of the projects that came out of that study, in addition to the Coward Mill widening, was if you're on Sawway Road now going southbound, and there's only about storage for probably maybe three, maybe four vehicles in addition to that timing. So we're actually going to make that, we're going to have, I think that now is about 75 feet long, we're going to make that left-turn bay about 500 feet long. So we're going to allow for a lot more storage of left-turning vehicles going towards the east or towards the school, in addition to the signal timing optimization at both ramp intersections as well as Cherahala. So we've kind of looked at those zones, and we'll do a little bit of analysis to make sure that that traffic signal timing is optimized at all three locations to move traffic through there as efficiently as we can.
Okay. And I think you said this, but I want to make sure I'm correct. Back to Coward Mill, the half mile will go from the school all the way to Pelisipi Parkway, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
I turned it back on. Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Adams, can you speak to us, we have heard a lot from residents of Hayden Hill, a neighborhood in Harden Valley, can you speak to me about those numbers? And would it be possible to carve that neighborhood out of the map and keep them in their current zone? Can you kind of speak to us about that a little bit, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we looked at, of course, the total number for the grandfathering in of the fourth-grade students, we're looking at roughly 100 students. We even looked at possible the siblings, if we grandfathered their siblings in. If we're looking at all elementaries, you're talking about 39 students. Keep in mind, this is K through 3. This does not include the kindergarten students. And we looked at the total overall for all schools, it was 99. If you're talking about Harden Valley Elementary exclusively, what that looks like, basically, the fourth-grade students, you're looking at 71. And those are the students who are slated to be rezoned. And if you look at the, for siblings, if you carved out the siblings, you're looking at a total of 26. Keep in mind, once again, this is K through 3. But if you look at, I know there were some questions about if they had a sibling in the middle school, what those numbers look like, and you're talking about 70 siblings. So we looked at all those scenarios. I will say, at the request of several families, they had asked that we look at the roads, look at the neighborhood, and we did. We did run across a concern, and I had several conversations with Dr. Shafenocher about with this. There are about 36 homes that are currently being built. We just built our home, and I can tell you, just looking at those homes, they'll be moved in by December, if not earlier. There's a total of 49 homes when you include 13 empty lots, and then there are about five houses and eight townhome lots that are available. So it's a total of 49 homes altogether. But once again, carve out the 36 homes that are new construction that should be built within a couple of months. And then you talk about the 13 empty lots, and then, of course, the townhomes, and the five lots for houses that are available.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Adams, can we put back up the numbers that showed how many students were moving right here? So it looked like if we accounted for the 100 students that are grandfathered, the change is about 735 would be at the new school, but the capacity is 1,200. And then Harden Valley gets down to 978 in '23. So it's about 200. So am I correct in assuming that on that map, the new zone is where we're expecting the most growth? Because that's where the most vacancy will be in terms of enrollment, not on the farther west side of Harden Valley?
So it's a combination of things. I mean, you've got about roughly 43 students in the Hayden Hills area. And then you've got, there's a lot of growth and expansion going on just in that area. But that area, that area altogether, the Hayden Farms right across the street, that is a booming area.
Yeah. So what I'm, what my question's really about is kind of much longer term than even the next two or three years. I mean, as you all are doing your very long-term projections, you all feel that the most growth is going to be in the new zone itself, not in the new Harden Valley zone, correct? Because the difference is almost 600 students in the new zone. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, great. And can you just speak, I don't need all the nuance, but just for the public, can you speak to a little bit in terms of how we look at those projections? Like, how do we make projections about future growth in terms of students? Can you speak to that process?
So I will call Ryan up at this time, because we had this conversation today.
Sure.
And I don't know if he feels comfortable, if we feel comfortable, because what we do is we get those projected numbers from the county. And basically, that number comes out right before Thanksgiving. And so they're currently looking at those numbers. So he can speak traditionally how we did in the past, but where they are right now in that process, I know that's right before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. And Ryan, I'm going to ask you my other question, too, so you can hit both of them. I know one of the things that said in the memo was that buses will not use Pelisipi Parkway. Can you speak to whether or not they'll be crossing Pelisipi Parkway, and how they might access this zone if they're not using it? So, thank you.
The second question's a shorter answer, so I'll take that one first. So how buses are going to cross is they will, they will cross Harden Valley along Harden Valley Road. I'm sorry, they will cross Pelisipi along Harden Valley Road. The way that they access Harden Valley Road, that's going to be determined by what the bus routes look like. If you look on the map, there's a significant proportion of the zone, Gwyn Road, Swafford Road, those areas, that depending on how the buses end up, we end up routing them where we need to go, it might actually make more sense for us to not go back out to Sawway to come down to Harden Valley Road and go through that way. So it might, I guess, that part is yet to be determined. But we're not going to, we currently do not send buses on Harden Valley Road, except for two exceptions, because there are developments that literally the only way to get in and out of them is on Pelisipi Parkway. We have some accommodations. We use smaller buses to serve those two areas. Other than that, buses are not to use Pelisipi Parkway when transporting students to and from school. That's going to remain the same. So the intent will be for them to use, you know, the infrastructure that is not, you know, has a lower speed limit, for lack of a better term, in order to get kids to and from. Now, your first question about the projections and how we use those, so we have a partnership with Knoxville, Knox County Planning, and they kind of help us use that. We have some technology, or some software that we use, that they use as well. And they look at property sales, you know, rezonings, things that come before the zoning commission. And they are able to, from that data, they're able to extrapolate a number of students at all three different grade bands. And so we can take that information from them, and they will do, you know, they will project out up to five years. And so we will take that information from them, combine it with some of the information we have in-house, like, you know, transfer rates, historical transfers, that kind of thing, and come up with a number that we feel comfortable with. So there's a lot of science, there's also a little bit of art. But it also, it ultimately has, in the past, it's proven to be, it's proven to be accurate, it's proven to be a worthwhile tool for us to use. For example, I think this came up at the Karnes meeting, when we look at the numbers for Karnes, what they were supposed to be this year, in our predictions from the past, they're within one student. So it is a, it's a, it's a worthwhile process, it's a data-driven process, and it's something that I feel like we can take these conclusions and make decisions with them.
Thank you. Mr. Dillingham, can you also speak real quickly to the PRZ zone related to the new school, and if there's any potential current concerns around students accessing the school within the PRZ zone? I know students aren't required to walk, obviously, it's up to the parents to get them there. But I'm sure that's a concern for some in terms of access for those who are within that zone.
So the, I guess, historical precedent, the PRZ is the PRZ regardless of what the road infrastructure looks like. It was the same at Carter, it was the same at Gibbs Elementary. Like, regardless of where we build the school, the PRZ is a board policy that is in place, and we plop it down. So it is, my expectation is the PRZ will be one mile on the roads for this school, just as it is for every other school.
Ms. Henderson? Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Snowden, I have a question for you. I'm sorry to make you get back up again. Thank you for being here.
No worries. Glad to do it.
I have a question about Sam Lee Road, which is a one-way road, you know, on each side, basically. My car barely fits on Sam Lee without hitting rumble strips. Are there any plans to widen Sam Lee Road at all, or work on that in the future?
The subdivision, I think the second, Hayden Farms, I think, is, that developer is required to widen from Hayden Hills to his entrance. So there is some improvement required by the developer, as well as the developer of another subdivision that's actually to the west side of Steel Road. We're working with him about doing a partnership to install a roundabout at Steel Road, Sam Lee, Couch Mill, and Swafford. You know, it's one of those, there's four legs, and each road's a different name. So there, those are a couple of improvements. So it won't be entirely widened, but there will be some partial improvements.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Triplet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quick question about the PRZ. Will that cross Pelisipi? No.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One, I just went to some, I went to some of the community meetings, and I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Dillingham and Dr. Adams, for your team and the work. It's, like Dr. Ryswick said, nobody really loves zoning. It always causes frustration, not just from a logistical side, but also from the parent's side. So appreciate you all and the work, and also really appreciate the memo that was put together. I know as I was looking through the agenda and started writing down questions, as I read through the memo, most of them were answered, and really appreciated the layered maps. That was a nice touch. So thank you all for the work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Ms. Henderson?
I'm making you work tonight, Madam Chair. Thank you. I just want to say, I agree. I thought that memo was great, answering a lot of questions that I had. Growth is never easy, rezoning is never easy, especially out in the Harden Valley area, where we're seeing it significantly with infrastructure and now the school issues. And I understand that this is a response to the growth that's happening out there. We have to have a new school. And, but I also understand it from a parent, I am a parent, so I do understand that aspect as well. You know, switching a school that your children and your family have come to love, so I understand that as well. And I just want to thank the mayor in his making a priority of planned growth. They are having some meetings this week. I encourage the public to attend those, so that everybody's voice is heard in the planning and what Knox County will look like in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Is there any other questions, discussion, comments? Okay.
I just have one last comment. Thank you, Board members. I do want to say that we spent extensive time together trying to come up with a great plan. Once again, rezoning is never fun, and it's certainly not easy. But I can assure you that we looked at every possible scenario, and we wanted to look at real numbers, and we wanted to be very transparent of what we were looking at to answer any questions that the community would have. I would also like to take this opportunity to introduce Dr. Shafenocher. This will be the new principal at the new Northwest Sector Elementary. I cannot wait till, I don't have to call that anymore. And very excited to have her lead that school, and I know she will do great things, and that community is very blessed to have such an exceptional leader.
Thank you.
First, thank you all for this school. As previous principal of Harden Valley Elementary, I was there for seven years as head. I can't tell you how much this school is needed. They are, they're just, they're bursting at the seams. So this school is going to help with that. So thank you for that. Last week, as you can see through those pictures, or that one picture that was up on, there it is, this school came to life. Crispin Company, which is the construction company, brought out three, or, I'm sorry, two steel beams to all three schools. And we were able to take kids and take and put their handprints on this beam and teach them just a little bit of construction about where the beam goes in the school and what this means. And that's something that's going to forever be burned in their memory, which brings me to the next point, opening the doors next year to this new school. I can't help but think about the impact that it's going to have on these kiddos walking through, and the memories that are going to be made next year in creating a school culture and something that they want to come to every day. So again, thank you for that opportunity. And next steps, I can't wait to create the name, generate that feedback from the community, and select a mascot. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shafenocher, and Mr. Snowden, and Dr. Adams, and Mr. Dillingham. And I'll just echo what Daniel said, reading through this memo. You know, any questions that I might have had were eventually answered as I was going through it. So it was a very well-laid-out plan and document. So thank you for that. So next on the agenda is our ESER report. Ms. Kelly, oh, you moved chairs. I was looking for you. You were over there when I came in.
I slid over.
Oh, and just before you start, Ms. Kelly, just a reminder, as we discussed at our workshop, Board members, that we will be moving our ESER updates to our quarterly work sessions after this month. All right, Ms. Kelly?
So we just talked about having a new school, and how exciting is it to think that we are going to have a new school in the Harden Valley area? I am also invested as a new grandmother with a grandson that lives in the Harden Valley area. So thank you, Board members. But with opening new schools, we need great educators. And so our focus this evening will be great educators in every school. And so with that said, I'm going to turn the podium over to Ms. Himmigan, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Talent, and her phenomenal team.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity for our team to highlight some of the initiatives to get, keep, and support great educators in every school. As a reminder, belief statements for great educators in every school. All students should be instructed by great teachers. Schools should be staffed with diverse educators that mirror the demographics of their student population. Great teachers deserve to be celebrated. Teachers should be compensated well for their professional service. Teachers should have access to high-quality support and resources they need. And our teachers and leaders should have access to strong professional development, credentialing opportunities, and leadership growth opportunities. And lastly, all schools should be led by great leaders. So what we want to do today is zoom out a little bit. ESER funds some initiatives with regard to great educators in every school, but the Business and Talent team is doing a lot of work in addition to our ESER-funded initiatives, so wanted to highlight a few of those. Our main focus areas this school year center around staffing, recruitment, benefits and retirement, alternative certification pathways, and the applicant and hiring experience. A few things we're doing in those categories. Around staffing and recruitment, we have realigned our department to better support staffing needs, as well as creating the talent acquisition team. You all got to meet Dr. or Mr. Mosman last month, and his team is doing some great work. Benefits and retirement, as you all may remember, one big focus area there this year is allowing our classified staff members to have the opportunity to participate in TCRS, the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. That is both a benefit and a recruiting tool, we believe, allows our staff members to participate in the same retirement system as our certified, classified staff members, the same as certified staff members. Also allows classified staff members to keep their retirement plan when they move between positions, which brings us to alternative certification pathways. We're hoping more between positions, which brings us to alternative certification pathways. We're hoping more of our classified staff members will be able to make that transition to a certified position with the alternative certification pathways and the increased grow-your-own opportunities, which you all heard a little bit about last week at Board Retreat. The applicant hiring experience, we are evaluating that and making improvements a couple of different ways. There are surveys that are going out to both administrators and new applicants and new hires to give us some feedback, and there are going to be significant updates to our MUNIS system at the end of this month, which is our applicant tracking system. So, our ESER-funded initiatives, this is our heat map for our ESER-funded initiatives that fit within those categories. Permanent substitutes, you'll hear from Ashley Huffaker, Director of Benefits, and Robin Ellis, Principal of Norwood Elementary School, today, more in-depth on permanent substitutes. We are on track with permanent substitutes. Cognitive coaching, you all got to hear, I believe it was back in the summer, from Mitch Cox, Supervisor of Employee Relations, on what cognitive coaching is. But it builds capacity for self-directed learning, essentially. We are, we are yellow there, on track, but yellow because we haven't fully started yet. So, our first cohort will go through cognitive coaching training in March. That first cohort will be about 40 educators. Grow-your-own program expansion, you all got to, again, you all got to hear about that a little bit last week at Board Retreat. And development of math-certified educators, we are yellow there. We are on track, but still have a little bit of work to do. We are, development of math-certified educators, what fits in there is mentors for math teachers, some additional math positions, and then developing classified personnel to become math teachers. And so, there's a mix between the grow-your-own program and the development of math-certified educators. So, I will let Ashley Huffaker tell you a little bit more about our permanent substitutes.
Good evening. When thinking about the theory of action for our permanent subs, if schools have consistent additional instructional capacity, then students and teachers will have fewer disruptions to their instructional role, resulting in a more consistent learning environment for our schools and our children. So, think about a permanent sub as like a backup plan if something goes wrong. The permanent sub is there to step in. They're prepared to step in and continue instruction for our students. In addition to continuing the instruction for our students, with the permanent sub being based solely at that school, they are familiar with the school and the staff, as well as the policies and procedures of the school, the expectations of the school, the safety plan of the school, as well in some situations, maybe even some individual behavior plans for some of the students. So, as Ms. Himmelgarn said, we have invested in the creation of a building-based permanent substitute as part of the ESER funding. This allows additional staffing flexibility and capacity to our schools to support minimized staffing disruptions. We are currently piloting in all of our schools for the 22-23 school year, a permanent sub. We anticipate that we will be able to fund these positions through the 23-24 school year. In the spring of 2022, we posted 89 permanent substitute positions with the hopes that they would be, they would be filled and hired for and ready to go for the 22-23 school year. That is one permanent sub position per school, including our special-day schools. We have currently, as of Friday, September 30th, we have currently hired 82 of those. So, we are continuing to receive applications for the locations that have not yet been filled. When thinking about the impact of the permanent sub on our student learning and on our schools, we have implemented a reporting tool for our permanent substitutes. We are asking them weekly to fill out a form for us that notates how many days they worked as a certified teacher and covered a class, how many days they worked as instructional support and an educational assistant role, and how many days they were just an extra set of hands supporting the schools and the students if there were no unfilled vacancies in that school building. So, what that does is it allows us to capture how many unfilled vacancies our permanent subs have been assigned to cover, and it helps us measure how many days permanent subs provide classroom coverage or instructional support for our students, which then tells us that our kids have a familiar face, and somebody can just pick up and continue with their, with their learning. So, this evening, we have asked Principal Ms. Robin Ellis from Norwood Elementary to join us tonight to give you guys some additional feedback about permanent substitutes. Ms. Ellis has had a permanent sub in her building prior to the 22-23 school year. She saw early on that what a benefit having a permanent sub in the building can do, and so she chose, in previous years, to fund a permanent sub through her Title I funding. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ellis.
First of all, I just want to thank the Board for approving funding for full-time subs in our schools. Like Ashley said, we normally use our Title I money to purchase a full-time sub, but since we received one from the district this year, that has freed up money for us to use our Title I funds for other things. For example, we purchased Learning A to Z, which provides level text to students so that we can differentiate the work and support reading fluency. We've also been able to purchase an extra teaching assistant position, which that also helps to give us another person to help with the tier instruction, so that fidelity can be met. And then, an extra staff person also provides more individualized instruction for our struggling students. So, our purpose is to meet our students where they are and then to grow them from there. This year, for whatever reason, has been a very extremely hard year for us to get a sub, and so having that permanent sub in our school has helped in so many ways. First of all, there's consistency. The sub quickly learns our routines and how we do school, and then the students become familiar with someone that they see every day, and so therefore, relationships and trust can be built. They also work with small groups of students and/or individual students when they're not subbing. It also ensures that positions are filled, and it keeps classrooms running and instruction taking place. We also don't have to pull teaching assistants to fill those positions, which allows them to continue to work with our RTI students in reading and math, which also then helps to reach fidelity. And then, our substitute has already built relationships with students, and then, as long as she's in the classroom substituting, they're very familiar with her. So, then, I decided that I would ask our full-time sub her thoughts on being at our school. And it was real neat to look at what she said, because it really supported a lot of the things that I've already talked about. But she talked about that students get familiarized with the sub, therefore behaviors are easier to manage. She talked about how subs get familiar with different grade-level teachers' plans and lessons, and therefore, there's more consistency when teaching students. Teachers can continue with more directed lessons rather than possibly providing just worksheets for students to do. And just the fact that the sub provides consistency for students and staff, they add that stability to the school. And then, lastly, the sub brings her skills and personality to the staff. So, again, I want to thank you for providing full-time subs in our schools, because for us, it has truly made a difference.
Thank you all. Our last slide is now incorrect. It was the old schedule, so we will get that updated. Any questions for Ms. Huffaker or Ms. Ellis?
So, do we have any questions? Mr. Watson?
Just one. Thank you, Madam Chair. This may be hard to speak to, but given that we have 82 permanent subs, what's the residual impact we've seen on not, the need for non-permanent subs? Like, how much is that alleviating?
There, there still is a need for non-permanent subs, so...
Yeah, I don't want to send the message, hey, we got it!
Right. No, we, there is, there is most definitely still a need for non-permanent subs. And in fact, the permanent subs have actually pulled from that, that substitute pool a little bit. So, we have hired some of our substitutes as permanent subs. So, there is, is most definitely still a need for permanent subs, and we hope to have a world where both are fully staffed, both substitutes and permanent subs.
And Ms. Himmelgarn, I've heard in the past that there's sometimes some barriers for people becoming subs in terms of cost and things like that, and on the front end to be hired. Can you speak to that? And is there, have we been able to alleviate any of that?
Ashley, would you like to speak to the cost? To, Ashley can better tell you about the cost.
Yeah, and I'm mainly speaking about just our day-to-day subs, not necessarily the permanent one, but I know that's been a, I've heard that as a barrier for some...
You're right.
...becoming a sub, so...
So, yes, there are some additional costs to signing up to sub. The way that we have it set up right now, with our substitutes, if they have a teaching license in any state, then all they are required to do is pay for drug testing and fingerprinting. The cost for those two things, drug testing, I believe, is $58, and fingerprinting is $39 and some change. And that's what the people that have a teaching license, that's all they are required to do. If they don't have a Tennessee, if they don't have a teaching license in any state, or even in Tennessee, if they have come to us with a high school diploma, college education, they are required to take the steady exam, which is just a substitute, kind of a classroom management type of course that we ask them to take. And there is an exam that comes along with that, and it is a cost of, I think, $39.99.
Have we looked at the possibility of just removing those barriers? And I know we've had struggles getting subs on a consistent basis. Have we looked at possibly taking care of that? And is that, is that a possibility?
So, as far as, we have not looked at taking away the steady exam. The steady exam has been set in...
I don't necessarily mean taking the exam away. I'm really talking about the financial cost, paying for it.
Oh, no, I don't think that has been discussed.
Yeah. Thank you.
And the background check and fingerprint, that would be a cost, not just for substitute, for all employees, all new employees.
Sure. So, the one that's unique to substitutes is that exam. I'd love to see us consider somehow taking care of that in the future, but I don't know if it's been looked at.
Okay. We can look at that.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've also heard that as a barrier, and I, you know, perhaps we could look at even reimbursing employees after the fact, you know, to at least, because I know we don't want to spend money and then they do all this and then they leave. So, maybe even a reimbursement program, you know, six months, or whatever the appropriate timeframe would be. But I would definitely be in favor of that also.
We can look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Himmelgarn, Ms. Huffaker, Ms. Kelly? Okay, so, moving into our regular agenda items. Board members, just a reminder that three items were added to our October 5th meeting agenda in response to discussion at our annual workshop last week. Consideration of amendments to Board Policy I 351 due to changes in the Tennessee State Board rules as Item 7A. Consideration of Superintendent Ryswick's Annual Action Plan as Item 10E. And discussion and possible action on our membership in class as Item 10G. And also, Item 6D has been withdrawn. So, moving into the regular agenda, Ms. Cottney has a list of proposed committee assignments that she will pass out at the end of this meeting to Board members. I don't think there's going to be any big surprises. That form went out at the workshop, so. But if you do have any requested changes or any concerns, just reach back out to Ms. Cottney, and we'll try to adjust if we can. Okay. So, Items 6A and B. Mr. Dubler, would you like to speak to Item 6C?
Sure, I'll be happy to. So, there was this agreement with, for student teaching with the University of Tennessee Chattanooga, and there were several emails going back and forth between KCS staff and UTC folks and myself. And what happened was, unfortunately, there were a lot of drafts, but we couldn't, we couldn't find a, you know, a finalized copy. But then, one of the drafts was put on the Board Agenda last month. So, there's just a, really a slight change. I mean, the finalized version is before you now. There was one paragraph that dealt with UTC and the fact that they are a State of Tennessee UT system entity, and the fact that, you know, they're subject to what's called the Tennessee Claims Act and the Claims Commission. You know, boring legal stuff, basically. But bottom line was that the correct paragraph has been placed in there. Ms. Christie, Board Chair, and Superintendent Ryswick were kind enough to go ahead and, and sign that. So, it's just on for ratification at this point, because it was really a clerical error. But if there's any questions, I can, I can answer it further.
Okay, so, moving on. 6D, one or two? Oh, number two has been withdrawn. I'm sorry. I think I said that at my announcements. Three or four? Item five? Moving to Board Policy, 7A. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because it was added after the original agenda was published, can, Mr. Dubler, can you, or, actually, Ms. Owen, can you speak to that? You made that change, correct?
I made the change, and then Mr. Dubler changed my change. But yes, the State Board has changed the rules on the grade that can show on the transcript for credit recovery. So, previously, before this school year, if a student did not complete a course and then did complete the course in credit recovery, the credit recovery grade would show up to 70%, and it can now only show 60%. So, since that's a state change, we have to change it here also.
Any other questions, discussion? Moving on to grants, Items 8A or B? C or D? Contracts, A or B? So, regular agenda items, 10A. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It would be helpful, I think, to add a column to this that speaks to the category that this person is fulfilling. I'm assuming that most of these are teachers, and then I'm assuming that the person, when it says admin, that's probably an admin. But one of the things I'm curious is about is, in the detail, it speaks to the possibility of parents and/or subject matter experts serving on these committees? And I'm curious if there are any parent reps on the committees or this committee, and/or if there's external subject matter experts. I'm just not clear about that from the table itself. So...
Dr. Wilson?
Thank you. I'm actually going to have Gary Petco, who is heading up the Math Textbook Committee selection, to come up and talk a little bit about the process and who are the representatives on the committee. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent, School Board. Correct. As you look at that last column, that is admin, is administrator or principal on there, or an instructional coach. It does allow for outside stakeholders to be part of it, community members, or whatever. Our goal is we, to try to, as we make up committees and we start to advertise, we'll have a public viewing of all the textbooks and where they will be available, and we'll start advertising, once the committees are chosen and once the textbooks are in our hands, to do the different... our hands, to do the different types of public viewings. And at that point, we're going to try to list it to community members, especially the folks from the higher ed to look at the books as well with it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Petco. So does that mean, I was assuming that the grade levels that were listed meant that they were a teacher in that grade level. So it says at the top of, for instance, of a column, or of the part of the chart, it says grade 6 through 8, and then it says 7th, 8th, 6th. I'm assuming those are teachers in that.
Yes, correct. I apologize for seeing confusion on that.
No, that's, that's okay. I'm just, and so am I correct then that I'm reading this right? That there are no parent representatives recommended for the committee?
At this point.
Not that aren't these, not that some of these teachers aren't parents too, I get that.
No, at this point, none of the committees. You're right, those are the grades they're currently serving in. We want to choose, so look at the, in order to make the committees as concise as possible, we are having a committee, for example, grade 6 through 8, a middle school committee.
Sure.
And we wanted to show that we had representation from all the grades as possible within that committee. So that's what you see, the 6th, 7th, and 8th.
I'm, I'm not sure that, how I feel about the pros and cons of a parent serving on the committee. I just know that that's a possibility. And I'm, that's what I'm trying to get a sense of this. Has that been our practice in the past? Are we doing something different by not having a parent on the committee this time?
It hasn't been our practice in the past. I know we've had that. What we've tried to do is involve the parents as much as possible through our PTO, PTSO.
Sure.
As we start going through the process, pretty much from November till March, to get their input on it.
So, so our philosophy up to this point has been, let's build the committee with teachers, administrators, others within the school. And then once we have some things for parents to consider, then that's when we would bring in the parents.
Correct, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Good question.
Thank you, Mr. Petco.
So Item 10B. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because the newcomer center, I appreciate the design work, and I'm, and I hate that I didn't send out all my questions in advance. Normally, I do that. So I'm not sure if somebody's prepared to answer or not. But can somebody just speak to, because I think it's an exciting thing for our district, to how the newcomer center would work and specifically how some of the designs that we're seeing before us now will help, will help that work of the newcomer center. And if nobody's prepared to answer that, that's fine, we can speak to it on Wednesday. But it is something that I want to highlight, so. Is that you, Mr. Myers?
Mr. Myers looks like he's anxious, dude.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't mean to look so eager, I apologize. Because I don't, I, I can't speak very much about the schematic design. But what I can say is that it's going to be a strong partnership with our ELL department and the Paul Kelly Academy. So we're going to try to work with that staff. That space will be shared space, right? So it'll allow us to actually not just implement our newcomer academy, but also expand the capacity of the services we're able to provide through Kelly Academy, which I also think is exciting in terms of trying to support the grad rate work that, that happens through that program. So really, what that'll do also is give us the capacity to, to earn staff and provide more comprehensive programming for our newcomers. So originally, prior to the pandemic, when we started going down the road of a newcomer academy, it was going to be a really small undertaking where we would maybe serve 25 students, where we know the demand and eligibility for such a program is closer to 250, 300 students that would meet that criteria today. That doesn't mean they would all come to the newcomer center. So the newcomer center will be a program that we offer within the Kelly Academy. It's sort of the ultimate vision right now.
So when a newcomer comes to, into the system, how would they be directed to the newcomer center? And then what's the intention for how long they might remain a part of the newcomer center before they might go into one of our other schools?
Sure, and that, and that's a good question. So as we, as we get closer to launching the program, obviously, we'd work with our school-based registrars, right? So that we can make sure that when we have a student that enrolls in one of our, one of our schools, it's important that we don't turn anybody away, right? We want to enroll that family and do, take care of those folks, right? But we want to make sure they also have access to the, to the resources that might guide them back to that eligibility to the, to the newcomer center, right? So it won't be a, it won't be, it won't be a mandated enrollment into the newcomer center, right? It'd be a family choice. Obviously, you know, many of our families enroll at the Welcome Center, which the Welcome Center is also located at Lincoln Park, right? So that's going to be a closer process there. We've not yet started training staff to, to do that yet, as we, we still have time before we're going to be launching that program. But the idea would be that regardless of the enrollment site, families that have a student who is eligible for that program would be able to get, to get information and be able to make a choice in terms of selecting newcomer program versus their regular school. It is not the plan that the newcomer center would be a terminal program, I mean, like the kid would, a student would graduate from there, right? The idea is that it bridges the skill gap that exists when we have our newcomers to better prepare them to go to their zone school and graduate there. So there is not a concrete, you go to the Welcome Center and you stay for X amount of time, because the nature of the program would be a family could choose to allow their student to exit, you know, at their, whenever they would like to, right? So we've not yet ironed out exactly what the specific timeline would be, but we do know that it is, its purpose will be to be a tool to prepare those students to be successful in the comprehensive school setting at their zone school.
Yeah, so the decision to remain would be family by family, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Yeah, so I just want to say thank you to you and to the superintendent and for others that have been involved in this and helping this work come to this level in our community. I think it's important, so, thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to give the new folks some information about the Kelly Academy and that building. Different pieces of the building have been renovated over time. So this piece that we're talking about now was basically two floors that have been used for, well, one of the floors has been used for adult education classes in the evening for, there was a time when there was an electrical class in there, there was an HVAC class in there. And so for use by adults, it was okay-ish. But it was, it was not, not something that would be safe for children. So it's, it's a huge advantage to have these two floors upgraded so that it can be used, so that the whole building is being used now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. And I would echo that. If you've not been to that building or to visit Paul Kelly, I would encourage you to go visit. I know the principal at Paul Kelly loves visitors, and the teachers usually do too. So it is always good to check in and, and go see it for yourself. So moving on in regular agenda items, Item 10C. And we with, we moved 10D to the beginning of the meeting.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really, for those, for the public, I think it's important for the public to know why this was added. So this is a part of, it's a part of the contract that the superintendent has, that we would have an annual action plan each year that would coincide with his performance evaluation and also would coincide with the strategic plan. So that's, Dr. Ryswick's been working on an annual action plan, and basically, this is just codifying that in a written form. So I really appreciate you and others that worked on this, taking the steps to do that. And the other thing that I want to point out to the public is that there was work done to try to do a crosswalk between the annual action plan and our current strategic plan, which expires in 2024. And so those items are called out in the far-right column. I haven't had enough time yet to fully dive in. This may have more questions on Wednesday night, but mainly just wanted to say thank you for turning that around pretty quick and getting that in written form and also doing that crosswalk, so.
Ms. Horn? Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we just talked about this on Thursday, so very quick turnaround. Thank you for getting something to us. So we talked about at that point having, we talked about this in November or December. So the, well, are you planning to add the objectives, like on the first page, under Excellence and Foundational Skills, the specific goals by that time?
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Yes, that's the plan. So we will, we actually have had initial conversation with REA right now to look at those. And so we, yeah, we didn't have time to do those purposely by Monday, from Thursday, but our plan will be to bring in November to have those targets for, for the next year in there.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for getting this to us.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know at the, the board retreat, we had a lot of conversation about the instrument and the alignment between the action plan and the contract. And so I think this is much closer for sure, and haven't gotten to dive into all this. I know one, I think there's a typo on Performance Evaluation Guidelines, Item Number 6. It references Appendix F, which I think that's correct, but in the back, that 360 actually says Appendix E. So there's two Appendix Es when there should be just one, and the 360 should be Appendix F. The, the one thing that I think might be missing from that, if I remember the intent of our conversation, is I think the 360, in terms of the questions that will be asked or outlined, there's nothing in Item 6 on Performance Evaluation Guidelines that speaks to REA managing that process and, or, and working with the superintendent to identify. I think the important part is to say that REA and the superintendent is going to identify the target groups of the 360. That was, I think, the essence of our conversation at the retreat. And I think it's important for the public to understand who's making the decision about who's going to be asked. And so I think if we can maybe flesh that out a little bit more in the Performance Evaluation Guidelines, that would be helpful. And then also want to point out for the public, as it states there, that we did decide that that would not be weighted, that that's really for the superintendent to be able to, to learn and grow from, but would not be a part of the, the weighted evaluation.
So, any other questions? So moving on to Item 10G. And this is our discussion and possible action on whether we want to stay with the Coalition of Large School Systems for membership for a lobbyist. And board members, if, I know we discussed this last week, but this is kind of a cleanup because Mr. Dupler brought it to our attention last year, that by the time we vote on the contract for the lobbyist, it's too late to withdraw from the organization. So you're pretty much committed by the time you vote on that contract, whether you approve it or not. So this, you know, it is good to have this discussion now, since we have to put it in writing to them no later than November 1st. So, Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be sure everyone understands a couple of things. When we last met with CLASS, which would be at the winter meeting, the consensus at that time was that all four districts would go back to their individual boards and bring forward what we want to see from our lobbyists. So we were to go out and talk with our boards and determine what our expectations were for our lobbyists. That's quite different from talking about completely withdrawing from CLASS. So I think that the discussion that we've been having for all these months about looking at our expectations for our lobbyists has sort of flipped to something completely different. And it's not really what we agreed to do, so that concerns me greatly. The other thing that concerns me greatly is that we're making a decision to potentially withdraw from an organization we've been part of since 2007, even though five of our board members have never participated in any of those meetings. So it's incredibly concerning to me that we would consider getting rid of that coalition when the majority of us haven't seen that coalition work. It's just something to take back and think about.
Mr. Watson?
I know it doesn't directly speak to the, this question on the agenda, but it does go hand in hand. I do think it's important for Knox County Schools to consider and look at the possibility of hiring our own lobbyists that works just for Knox County Schools. It seemed like there was some traction about that idea. I do think the question, as we stated it the other day in our, in our retreat, there really are two questions about, do we want to keep Millsap, Skowen, and do we want to stay a part of CLASS? It's not really our decision to decide if we want to keep Millsap, Skowen. We can't do that for CLASS. I think if we want to have that conversation of, are they the right lobbyists to represent the four largest districts? I think we need to have that conversation with the other representatives of CLASS at TSBA. So then, so then to me then, the only question at hand is, do we want to remain a part of CLASS? And to me, the value of remaining a part of CLASS is that we are continuing to push on the areas that we have alignment. We don't have alignment on all the areas, but on those areas that we do, certainly we're stronger together than if we're not together. And so to me, the question of remaining in, in CLASS is one more about alignment and elevating things that we all care about and having more power behind it. If we want to have a conversation about removing Millsaps and Gowan and looking for other lobbyists for CLASS, I think that's a conversation we can certainly have. But I think that's a conversation for CLASS itself, not necessarily for the Knox County Board of Education by itself, because we can't make that decision. Thank you.
Do we have any other? Mr. Triplett?
I would agree that there are two different discussions, one around CLASS and one around Millsap, Gowan. My concern with CLASS itself personally is just, I'm not sure that all of the districts that are, we are in CLASS with, we would align with. And our contract speaks in, kind of in red letters there, that we will, they will only lobby for things we all agree on. And I'm having trouble finding what those things are that we all agree on, that they are advocating for. Our current membership at TSBA has some dedicated lobbyists that dedicate just for education. The lobbyist group that CLASS has had for a number of years lobby for lots of other things as well. I just kind of took a look through that list, I think that Jennifer put together the other day. There's three law enforcement, five medical and health groups, three or four education groups, a couple of jobs-related groups, and then some tech groups. So there are two lobbyists trying to cover all of those bases. And my concern, I know Millsap, Gowan's another issue that we would discuss with CLASS, but is there really hasn't been much oversight over the lobbyists as far as reporting what they're doing and what they're lobbying for. I don't, I haven't found much of that, whereas at least TSBA, their lobbyists do send us a legal review and some information about what they're, what they're lobbying for. So those are my concerns with continuing in CLASS.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, we have a great deal of information that they send back to us. We have a weekly meeting from the time that session begins until the time that it ends. We have a list of all of the bills that have gone into public chapter. We also have a report out of all of the bills that were followed. We have a report generally at the beginning of session with all of the education bills that have been filed, which ones may be of concern and which ones may be things that we want to advocate for because they match what we are looking for. And the, the place where we determine our, our mutual goals is in those fall and winter meetings. So if we haven't been to the fall and winter meeting, then it's hard to have seen that take place. So in those meetings, we have members from all four school districts, and we discuss those mutual goals at that time. Once we get down to our legislative priorities, sometimes a district may have a legislative priority that the other districts don't have. That legislative priority isn't carried by the lobbyists. So just those priorities that we all agree on are the, those that would be carried on by the lobbyists, regardless of who those lobbyists are. I'd also point out that when we are looking at that list of lobbying activities, all of those, I think there were 14 on the list, and if you go back through to the link with the Secretary of State and look at other lobbyists, you'll see that some individual lobbyists have as many as 40 different interests that they're lobbying for. So, and often, they are not at all aligned. So you might go back and take a look at that site and look at the massive number of lobbyists that are in the legislature right now to just the few that we have. So that's, that's a piece that is important to speak to the, the point of being stronger When we have four very to speak to the, the point of being stronger together. When we have four very large districts with about a third of the students in the state, I think, and all of those are agreeing on items that are of importance to kids, that carries some weight. When we split apart and we're each talking about different things, that carries much less weight. So I think we would be extremely remiss in getting rid of this organization first, but more to the point that it's very difficult to talk about what they do or don't do when a lot of us haven't actually looked at it. And I would say again, anyone who wants to be on those calls definitely can be. Also, even though this is not a legislative session right now, um, Ms. Cote, I forwarded out some things that we got from them just this morning. So even though it's not that legislative time, we get things all year if something comes up. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Triplet, I think you make two very good points. One, related to TSBA also having lobbyists, um, that support public education. And I don't remember exactly how many districts we have in the state, but it's over 100.
Forty-seven.
Hundred and forty-something, yeah, 147. So it's great that they're helping push public education agenda for those 147. I think there are some uniquenesses about the largest districts. And so to me, and I don't always believe this, I know in the realm of chocolate, more is not better, but I think in the realm of lobbyists in general, it is, if they're putting, if they're pushing in the same direction. But I do, and I also think you ask a, a great question, and I'd love to see this information as well, in terms of where has that alignment been between those four major, um, districts that are in CLASS? And I'm wondering if there's somebody that we could, uh, Jennifer, uh, could do a review, um, I'll only ask Ms. Owen because she's been the one most intimately involved, to do a review and see maybe what that alignment is over the last five years, maybe, to say, over the last five years, where are those points of alignment? Um, and, and probably Millsaps, Gowan, we could ask that question of them too, to say, how, it's going to be one thing for us to interpret the alignment. Like, when we look at those, where do we see the alignment? It might be also good to ask them, where did you see the alignment over the last five years? What, out of those agenda, uh, the legislative priorities of those four large districts over the last five years, for each year, where did you see the alignment and where did you think you were supposed to be pushing? I think both those sets of information, both from our perspective and also their perspective, could be helpful. Uh, because, uh, Mr. Triplet, I do, I do agree that, let's say over the last five years, there's been one total thing that we've aligned on, is that, and let's say it was minor, is that worth the $37,000 we pay a year? I don't know, maybe it's not. Uh, but if there's alignment over multiple facets, over multiple years, to me, that's another question, and I think it's a valid one. Thank you.
You'd like to see the legislative priorities from all four districts and also from Millsaps, Gowan, how they perceive them to have aligned. Is that correct?
Yeah, not, not necessarily. I don't want to see all the legislative priorities, um, individually. I want to see the overlap. So, you know, for the last five years. So over, for each year, over the last five years, where has the overlap been? Um, and, and maybe there's a number of where the, the number of things that didn't overlap. I don't know that that matters as much. But then also, did Millsaps, Gowan read it the same way? It would be interesting to know, do we think we have overlap in this area, but Millsaps, Gowan didn't think that was overlap? Does that make sense what I'm saying, seeing it from both perspectives?
Yes, and I can actually do that without, I mean, I, I will also ask them, but the Friday phone calls have an agenda each week, so each of those will show that overlap too.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I think that is part of the breakdown, is that we haven't seen that side-by-side overlap. So I don't, we never get a copy of what the legislative priorities are for these other boards. And so I think that is a, that's a breakdown in the class structure as a whole, which I think is part of our issue that we're having. So, um, that, and that's, you know, that can be rectified. But at the same time, I, you know, I think I, I think I may have brought up having our own lobbyists at our meeting last week. And so I, I can see value in that because I think that we, um, there are differences in the things that we value with the other large districts. So I still think that's something that we, that we should discuss. Um, and as Mr. Triplett said, we do have two different questions right now. So if we, if we choose not to be a part of CLASS, we need to make that decision now, correct? So, and if we chose not to do that, I believe we said last week, we would then issue an RFP and get that in process in the spring, or so that we could get that going in the spring. Did we talk about that very much last week?
I think what we said is, we could actually do both. I don't think we have to withdraw from CLASS to issue an RFP for our, and owned lobbyists. You could remain in CLASS and issue an RFP. So that is also another question, is do you do one and out the other? But you could do both, so.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to speak to that now? Um, Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the decision that we would be making about CLASS is a one-year decision, correct?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Reverend Butler, yes. So, um, this is, it's renewed year by year. So, so your decision on, on this would only be, uh, whether to remain in CLASS or not. And if you decide to remain in CLASS, it would be for, for the next year and could, and would come up for the question again next year.
And, uh, since this is just my second meeting, I can't remember whether or not you talked about CLASS last year to this extent or not. But if you did not, uh, this is a time when you're evaluating whether you want to be a part of something, but you really haven't done the evaluation prior to the decision time. So it may be a great opportunity to take a look at how this is working for us in this next year, maybe call it a probationary year if you like. And while we're doing that, we're looking at the possibility, or we're moving forward to having, uh, a lobbyist just for Knox County, because we don't have that now. So there would be a void if we were to leave, leave CLASS and not have that lobbyist in place. So it may be best for us to consider taking a, a harder look by participating, uh, in those, uh, monthly meetings, by participating in those fall and spring meetings, and then also making sure that we are agreeing with the other three more than we're disagreeing. If we're disagreeing more, then obviously it may not be something we want to continue. But if we're agreeing more, it may be something we want to continue. But we got to know, right now, I don't think if we, we, from what I'm understanding, we know if it's really beneficial for us or not. But wouldn't it be a terrible thing to dis, to dissolve this, this, this coalition when it is a beneficial coalition? We just don't see it because we haven't really taken a look. We may need to take.
And, and I can answer the question about having the discussion about CLASS in the past. It's kind of always been grouped with the lobbyists. And Mr. Dupler had called it to our attention last year, that we actually have bylaws in this group that says that we have to notify them no later than November 1st in writing if we want to remain. And we had never had that discussion. So it, you know, I do feel like it's something the board needs to discuss every year, right? I mean, because by the time that contract comes up, if someone has a problem with the contract, we've not even discussed if we want to remain in the organization. So I do think that this needs to be, I mean, whether we keep them or not, I do think it needs to be an annual discussion, just as a cleanup on, on the process, if that makes sense.
Yes, if I may add, we may want to, uh, make, uh, a note that we look at this following the, uh, General Assembly's, uh, when they close out and see how well did we do, how, what did we get out of this? We do the evaluation at that point, so by the time we get back here this time next year, we are more sure of what we have and what we want to do.
Thank you. Ms. Pike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to say that as a new board member as well, I completely agree with Reverend Butler and also agree with you that these discussions are really important and the participation is really important and doing our due diligence in kind of investigating all of these things to see, ask the questions and get in there and find the information, and then come back and have more conversations as we go through this process instead of being left in a void.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I agree, Reverend Butler. I think a time to really look at this is immediately past a session and seeing what was the, the work that was done. Um, I, I also agree that it's in, it's important for us to, um, to be able to hold to our intentions and from, and I could be wrong, and I don't think we owe anything to the other CLASS districts, but I do know that we left this conversation last time saying we do need to spell more, we need to spell out our expectations for CLASS and also for our lobbyists more. And I do think if we choose not to, it's, it's not really going down the path that we said we are going to be on. Again, I know we can change our minds. And then the other thing that we spoke to, and Ms. Horn, you brought it up, it is a major issue, is the governance issue around CLASS. I mean, we've basically been hands off the steering wheel, and I'm assuming most of the other districts have as well. I can't speak to that for a certain, but that seemed to be the sense in the room, right? Like, most people in the room that day in T, at TSBA were like, yeah, we probably don't pay enough attention to this, right? Um, and so I think to Reverend Butler's point, if we're saying we haven't been paying enough attention to it, and now we need to, is that the time to decide to break away? Or do we pay enough attention to make a good decision? And, and that's one of the things that I'm wrestling with, is the timing of this. I, I think it might be a little premature, even if we may end up there. Uh, but we should probably really do the due diligence and ask the hard questions and pay more attention and put our hands on the steering wheel when it comes to this, so.
Okay. Any more discussion? So, Ms. Henderson, do we have public forum?
We have one speaker signed up for public forum, Ms. Patty Saha. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
I'll take that.
Okay, I apologize.
It's Saha, but you were.
Saha, I apologize. Uh, if you don't mind stating your full name, county of residence, and then you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
My name is Patty Saha. I am in Knox County in Harden Valley. Okay. I'm a resident of Harden, Hayden Hill subdivision on Sam Lee Road, located less than five minutes to Harden Valley Elementary. It is the only neighborhood on the stretch between Steel Road and Sawway. It does not feed into the traffic congestion on Harden Valley Road. With the proposed rezoning, we will spend the same amount of time dropping off one child as we are currently doing getting all four of our sons to three different schools, meaning we will have a 20-minute drive both ways to drop off at one school. The bus is not reliable. Our travel choices to the new school are limited and dangerous. We can trek across country roads to the highway to then make a precarious left turn from Pellicippi onto Coward Mill. We can enter Pellicippi Parkway off Harden Valley Road and attempt a right turn onto Coward Mill, risking a rear-end collision because there is no separate right turn lane, or add to the Harden Valley Road congestion by making a series of left turns during peak travel time. Harden Valley Road is already backed up and heavily traveled, so using it as the main vein for the commute of all the buses and cars to Northwest is not a solution. It makes no sense to require Hayden Hill residents to cross a highway or commute to Harden Valley Road when we currently travel less than five minutes on uncongested roads. It makes much more sense to zone neighborhoods along Harden Valley Road to attend Northwest since they have a more direct route. All four of our children are involved in activities before and after school, so proximity to the three schools was the reason we purchased our home. Their varied schedules mean we cannot depend on the bus system. Our elementary son Silas runs with the Harden Valley Cross Country team. However, at Northwest, he cannot stay after school until 3:30 or 4:00 because I need to pick up his siblings at the other schools. Furthermore, the Harden Valley Cross Country program is one of a kind. Coach Jeff has led his team to seven championships in 11 years. He allowed Silas to practice with the team for two years before he was eligible to compete, and Silas has been the fastest third grader at every meet this fall. This experience is not transferable to just any school. In addition, I cannot imagine how I will manage mornings when my high schooler has practice or tutoring before school. I would need to zigzag from the academy over to Northwest only to fight my way back down Harden Valley Road to the middle school because it does not open until 7:30. Because I have multiple children and multiple activities, I will again be adding to the traffic that I currently don't contribute to as we take Steel Road from the north. It makes much more sense to keep my elementary student in the same area as my other children. Please reconsider the proposed rezoning plan based on more than what the map shows. At the very least, please offer an option to fourth graders or to students with older siblings at other schools. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public forum.
So moving to board forum, Ms. Staker, do you have anything today? Reverend Butler?
I may need the superintendent's assistance on this, but it has come to my attention that there was a student death at Alston East High School over the weekend. So we definitely want to be in prayer with the family and be in prayer with the students and staff there at Alston East, as well as Vine Middle School, because the student had a presence there as well. And be in prayer with this, uh, community. Uh, I won't get into the, the details because I'm not sure, uh, what has been, what is allowed to be shared, but it is, it is another, another devastating devastation to this, this school community, and we continue to pray.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson? Ms. Henderson? Ms. Pike? Ms. Horn? Mr. Triplet? Mr. McMillan? And I will concur, Reverend, Reverend Butler. I know that that, um, affected some of our South Knoxville students as well. Um, I had heard some about that from one of our administrators too, so we will definitely be keeping them in prayer. So with that, the meeting is adjourned.